Happy New Year, everyone. It is ten AM on January the ninth, two thousand twenty-four. This is our first regular meeting of Harden County Commissioners' Court, and I want to thank everybody for being here. We don't normally have this many, and I know some of you will probably leave after you get your certificates here in just a few minutes, and that's just fine if you'd like to do so. We have a quorum, and so this meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise to the invocation, this will be delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall this morning, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed in later. Dear heavenly Father, who comes before you today, and Lord, we're grateful and we're thankful for life and gifts and talents. Lord, we lift up our, all the staff of Harden County, we lift up our first responders, Lord, we pray that you'll be with those, Lord, who serve the public, Lord, and the public interest. Lord, we lift up our judge this morning, Lord, at the passing of his mother. Pray that you'll be with him and his family, Lord, over the next few days and months, Lord, as they grieve the passing of Ms. McDaniel. And Lord, we just pray that you would be with the family, God, and lead them in all that they do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's okay with y'all, let's just go ahead and skip down to item number six. I know everybody's ready to get back to work, right? Item six, special recognition of personnel and officials for meeting years of service milestones as follows. I'm gonna start with the District Clerk's Office. Ms. Hogg, you wanna come on up? And recognize Robbie Hiller for five years of service. Ms. Hiller, you wanna come on up? Do you want your other person to come up at the same time, or you wanna do them separately? All right, and that is Tracy Morgan. Ms. Morgan, come on up. And Ms. Hogg, you have the floor.
I am very blessed to have these two women working with me. They're very, very hard workers, a good example, and Harden County is really lucky to have them.
We agree. Thank you all for coming on. All right, next is Mrs. Walton, you wanna come on up? And she will recognize Pam eBay, and that's for five years of service with the District Attorney's Office. Do you have anyone else, Mrs. Walton?
I believe Thomas Tyler, my best fear, had ten years, but he declined to make them a public release.
Well, you can still talk about him anyway. Make sure everybody knows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, this is Pam eBay, and Dana took the words right out of my mouth, so I'll just repeat what she says. But Pam is truly a blessing to the District Attorney's Office. Most nights I have to tell her to go out, and she doesn't. And she's a wonderful, godly woman, and we are grateful to have her, and she's such a dedicated hard worker. Thank you for five years. I hope you stay for the next five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, very much. All right, and then Ms. Kelly, you wanna come up and bring Ronnie Taylor? Ronnie Taylor's gonna be provided with a certificate today for five years of service with the Juvenile Probation Department.
Ronnie came to us actually from Doylefield. He's been with us five years. He is our transport officer for juveniles to and from business and doctor's appointments, to and from placement or boot camp, and also he takes them to prison. So, we appreciate him. He comes an hour early every day, and I'm sure we'd have coffee, and I don't know what we would do without him.
Sheriff, you wanna come up? Sheriff Davis is gonna recognize Randy Irwin. Randy? Come on up, Randy. Randy has ten years of service with Harden County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, do you have any others?
Uh, no, I don't think I do.
Okay.
Not on this one.
Thank you.
My daddy, I really have to lie down. Randy's been with us ten years. He's a sergeant in the patrol side of things, so he's charged with keeping himself and the others in line. We appreciate everything that he does for us, and hope you're here for a lot more. We get to live our life like theirs with Randy, 'cause he travels on his motorcycle a lot. So, we get to hear about trips from time to time, and so we're always excited about that. But thank you very much.
Harrington, are you gonna handle Ms. Manzera's?
Yes, sir.
I think Brian's out today. John, do you wanna come up?
No.
Okay. This is Angela Manzera, and she's being recognized today for ten years of service with the Harden County Maintenance Department.
Obviously, Brian's your supervisor, but I will say we appreciate your hard work, and you always have such a positive attitude.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. And Laura, I guess these stars beside Ms. Whitley and Ms... Okay, so Sharon Whitley and Latasha Jones couldn't be here for court, but they're going to be recognized and receive a certificate. I'll provide those to them, or Melinda will. Sharon has ten years of service with the county, and Ms. Jones, the Assistant Help Director, has fifteen years of service with the county. Next, we'll have Chief Kevin Cummings come forward, and he will recognize Shannon Knapp for twenty-five years of service, and Tara Templeton for twenty-five years of service, and both of those are probation officers with the Adult Probation Department.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Well, I told them to keep their, here, just, they're gonna keep their speech less than fifteen minutes. Before I give them their certificate, I just have something from the office for each one of them, and I'm just opening it up real quick.
You haven't read it.
I'm here, I'm trying to check, extended a five-year with the Harden County CSDA extension.
I just wanted to know that. I'm not gonna be here five years, so I don't care what happens. Now, just real quick, I appreciate each one of y'all. Tara takes care of the entire staff. We've got sixteen people she takes care of, each one of us. And Shannon is our sub-probation officer. I'm not gonna tell you what they really call you, but... Nobody wants her as a probation officer, so I know she's doing a great job. I'll just tell you a real funny story real quick. Twenty-five years ago, we offered her a job, and she didn't show up for the interview.
That's true.
And that's true.
It's a story that happened.
The story is I forgot to invite her. I got to a conference, and when I came back, I said, "How the interview go?" They said, "She didn't show up." I said, "You gotta be kidding," and I got thinking, I said, "I didn't tell her about your..." And I'll tell them the story about your first day. The first day she ever came, she was not even employed yet. She was going to be employed, and I said, "Just come watch us handle court and see, you know, how things go." Was it two days in a row?
It was three.
Three days in a row, we got over fifty cases each day, the most ever in the twenty-nine years I've been here. And she was like, "I can't handle this." I said, "That doesn't, that doesn't happen."
It was long.
Yeah, it was over fifty cases each day, and she still came to work, so I appreciate y'all.
It's been fun.
And I've been to y'all to sign this.
All right, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Kelly to come back up one more time.
All right, this is Chief Monica Kelly. She is our juvenile probation, chief probation officer, and she's getting a certificate today for thirty years of service. Not very many people make it thirty years working for the people of Harden County, but this young lady has made it here thirty years. And I'll just say that there are a lot of juveniles who have come through the system here that Monica has made sure they got on the right path. She's not afraid of any single one of them now, nor has she ever been. I see some of them come through here when we have detention hearings, and she'll, sometimes, once they've moved on to the district court level, she'll tell me some stories about what's happened, and I said, "Monica, you really crawl into those beds and take care of getting weapons out of the juvenile detention center and anything else she has to do?" And she takes care of business. And there's probably many adults in Harden County that are on the right path because of this lady right here. And so, we really appreciate the job you've done for Harden County. She tells me every year she thinks she's gonna retire the next year, and I ask her, "Please, don't," and she hasn't yet. And I'm hoping she stays for at least three more years, not four more years. That's why you haven't got promoted yet. We're really kinda scared of that. But she does such a fantastic job, and we appreciate her. Thank you, Monica.
Monica, who's with you there?
My mother.
I just realized that.
She must be reason that I've been here thirty years.
Well, we appreciate her too. Thank you for supporting Monica in her job. All right, we'll go back up to number three. Consider and possibly approve the December twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes as presented by County Beck and the County Clerk.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from December twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, our County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. On our cash report summary and general checking, we have two million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. First Financial Bank, general checking, special money market, eight million, forty-seven thousand, six hundred ten dollars and fifty-nine cents. In Tech Pool General, three hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and five cents, for total in cash funds of ten million, six hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents.
Move to three, Mr. Evans. Let's have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
After the report was turned in and everything...
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Shirley did bring the, I think, one point four million, so we have had an increase since I put the report together.
Can you do it again, Ms. Shirley? Yeah. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams, and Ms. Cook. Item five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The free and paid expenditures for December twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth is eight hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Free and paid expenditures for January the third through the fourth are thirty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Expenditures for Commissioners' Court today are a hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. For total expenditures and transfers are one million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Gross payroll for December the twenty-eighth was five hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and fifty-three cents, and the total transfers for that payroll was one million, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move to second. Have a motion and a second. That motion was by Commissioner Kirkendall, correct? Yes, sir. Saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. One more thing on item number six. We had several people that reached their years of service milestones. Some of them could not be here today, so they'll come to the next Commissioners' Court meeting, and then some of them didn't want to come to Commissioners' Court, and we understand that, but they'll still get their certificates. So, we just wanna make sure that we let everybody know how much we appreciate their service for the citizens of Harden County. Item seven, consider request by Mr. Carl Marshall, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, to approve the two thousand twenty-four Harden County... Morning, sir.
Good morning. Yeah, we have a new cover for two thousand twenty-four. It's the nineteen oh-four courthouse.
Oh, really?
And that picture is courtesy of Tech dot.
Okay.
It's in the archives. Not a whole lot of changes, just a few road pavement types, mileage didn't change any. And the draft copies that were submitted previous court, they're a good look. There were no changes after that.
Okay. Hold this up where everybody can see it. There you go. Looks great. You said we'd be happy with it, and I agree. Thank you for that.
There's not very many pictures out there.
I bet not.
No, typically.
Have a motion to approve and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Item eight, consider approval of request by Ms. Angela Gore in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget by creating the opioid settlement fund zero three five. This amendment includes creating a new revenue line item, zero three five three six seven five hundred, opioid settlement funds in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars, and a new expenditure line item, zero three five five sixty three five two, minor equipment and supplies in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, saved it by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consider approval of request by Ms. Angela Gore to amend the fiscal year twenty-four opioid settlement fund by creating a new line item, zero three five five sixty three five two, minor equipment and supplies in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, and transferring those funds from the opioid settlement fund balance into that new line. So, have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now that we know where the money's at, we're gonna spend some. Next line item is number ten. Consider approval of request by Sheriff Mark Davis to fund the remainder of the bulletproof vest project, which was not covered by the grant, in the amount of forty thousand, zero zero five point five seven, to include eight additional vests for county employees using opioid settlement fund line item, zero three five five sixty three five two, minor equipment and supplies. Sheriff, you wanna discuss that item a little bit? Sheriff let me know last week that he wanted to talk about this line item and let us know what's going on with that grant.
So, previously in court, you approved an application for a grant, and there was a dollar amount that was discussed, and since then, the guidelines on the grant has been capped, and that number's been reduced down. So, not quite as much of the total amount was gonna be covered. There's gonna be about a seventeen thousand dollar, but seventeen thousand dollars we'll receive from the grant funding, and it's a fifty-fifty split. So, we need a little extra to cover the full project. There was some vests that didn't get included in the first round of orders for some other county peace officers, which is County Attorney Investigator, some constable, and one more deputy on my end. So, that kinda gets us to the point where we are now of the total amount, the total price tag for this, for this project is about seventy-five thousand, yeah, seventy-four, seventy-five. What the dollar amount that hasn't been approved already that's still needed is this forty thousand, so...
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, and I think that's a very good use for those funds, and appreciate the court approving that. Item eleven, consider request by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to approve the amendment to the bank depository contract with First Financial Bank in aid. This will allow the bank to use letters of credit as pledge securities?
The bank just came to us requesting that they be allowed to use the letters of credit as pledge securities for our monies. It is in our investment policy that letters of credit are acceptable. We have done it in the past. It's just a little bit different way that the bank can secure our money.
How are the, how's the money secured currently before we sign this contract?
The pledge securities that they have now are...
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you in the spot.
Almost right. They're pledged through, the letters of credit are exactly the same. They're just in how we would collect the money if the bank failed. I still would hold the letters of credit accounts in the safe until the time they would be released, and it's still the same thing. It's just a little different, different means of doing it.
And you feel great about this? No problems or no worries?
We did it with PNC, same, just the same.
What Debbie had told me is it's just as secure, maybe even just a little better. And she brought this up to me a few weeks ago. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider approval of request by Deborah McWilliams, Treasurer, to change the name, address, and signers of the TAC voter registrar bank account, account number ending in one, four, seven, nine, at First Financial Bank in aid of Harden County Voter Registrar. Authorized signers will change from Shirley Cook and Lisa Finn to Alyssa Freeman and William McDaniel.
This is due to the new administrator office, and then we'll get everything together and get it changed over without having to open a new account.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item thirteen, consider acceptance or resignation of Mr. Mike Morrison as the Emergency Services Commissioner for Harden County Emergency Services District Number Six, and that resignation is effective as of January first, two thousand twenty-four. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved it by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to say for the record that I hated to see Mike step down. He has lived here well. He has served with distinction. They've been able to do a lot of projects in the ESD. Very proud of him, and it's a loss for us to see him leave.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I just wanna reiterate our state that we appreciate Mike's years of service on the ESD Number Six. I think he had eight years. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen, consider and possibly approve appointment of Mr. Jason Griffin as Emergency Services Commissioner for Harden County Emergency Services District Number Six to fill the unexpired term left vacant by the resignation of Mr. Mike Morrison. That term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and Jason was nominated by Commissioner Kirkendall. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. They're gonna have a workshop this afternoon, I think, at five, and the regular meeting is either six or six-thirty. I'd encourage the public to attend.
And that's at the new fire station?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. They won't have any problem hearing Jason.
No.
Item fifteen, consider adoption of resolution one dash twenty-four authorizing the submission of Victims of Crime Act Grant Funding, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, as requested by the District Attorney, Rebecca Walters. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider adoption of resolution two dash twenty-four authorizing submission of the fiscal year twenty-five law enforcement terrorism prevention activities, sustaining tactical response team project grant funding application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, as requested by Mr. Clay Walker, grant coordinator. What did I say? I said Clay Walker, it's Clay Woodward. Can you sing? Clay Woodward, sorry about that. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, consider adoption of resolution three dash twenty-four authorizing submission of Victims of Crime Act Grant Funding, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, as requested by Ms. Jennifer Walters, Harden County Crime Victims Assistance Center Director. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, saved it by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, consider adoption of resolution four dash twenty-four authorizing the submission of one or more hazard mitigation grant program applications under DR four seven oh five, Texas severe winter storm, to the Texas Division of Emergency Management, authorizing the county judge and emergency management coordinator to act as the county's authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the application and committing matching funds. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved it by Commissioner Kirkendall. I believe that we already authorized the submission of this grant application a while back, but it required a resolution, and so is trailer the grant administrator in this one?
Yes, sir.
They sent us the resolution last week and asked us to approve this and make it formal so they could submit it with the application. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nineteen, consider and possibly approve request by Chief Monica Kelly, Juvenile Probation Department, for approval of increase in the daily rate of detention services for outside counties effective February first, two thousand twenty-four. Good morning, Chief Harrington. One more time? All right, so you had, I think you sent us all a memo about this, is that right? And you've done a comparison of other counties, and what is your recommendation on, tell us what we're charging now and what the recommended increase is.
We are charging one fifty-five a day for detention beds and two hundred and fifty dollars a day for high-risk suicide juveniles for outside counties. We currently have twenty-four contracts with outside counties. There are forty-five detention centers in Texas, we being one of them. Ours is one of the smallest. We have seven beds. I think there may be one smaller than us. Seven detention centers do not accept contracts at all, so seven of them do not accept any outside contracts or kids from other counties. With that being said, we are at one fifty-five. Most of the counties are going up to two hundred dollars or more a day, so we are requesting that Commissioners' Court raise that, increase that fine fee to two hundred dollars a day and three hundred dollars a day for high-risk suicides.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Okay, so two hundred a day, and then plus, if it's a suicide or high-risk, it would be three hundred a day.
Correct.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, who is the second? Commissioner Young? All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. If y'all haven't heard, the sheriff has a great idea to build a new jail. He's always fooled over there. And so, if we were to do that, we could turn the old jail into a detention facility, and Monica thinks we could probably keep people over there all the time. So, I didn't know if the sheriff wanted me to bring that up, but he's brought it up to me a few times and thought it'd be a good time to broach the subject.
We do have to turn down counties all the time for holding juveniles.
Yeah, sheriff thinks that one of these days, if we ever get in a position that we could have juveniles right next door and probably do very well. He thinks it'll pay for a new jail, and it sure might. So, something to think about. I can tell nobody's heard that before, so... Now you know. Sorry, Sheriff.
That's okay.
Number twenty, consider and possibly approve request by Chief Kelly for approval of outside detention contracts with several counties. So, that's Anderson County, Angelina County, Austin County, Chambers County, Cherokee County, Corial County, Ellis, the thirty-four, Thirty-third, and four hundred twenty-fourth Judicial District, and Gillespie County, Grimes, Houston, the first judicial district in Jasper County, Newton County, Sabine, San Augustine, Johnson, Leon, Liberty, Limestone, and Freestone, Madison, Navarro, Orange, Polk, San Jacinto, and Trinity, Shelby, Tyler, Walker, Waller, and Wharton Counties, all effective February first, two thousand twenty-four, at these new rates.
With the new increases.
Do they all know that we were going to bring this increase? Most of them that you do business with?
Most of them, they're the other chiefs. I'll email them before I send the contract. We send the contract after the Commissioners, after you sign it, and then their chief or their county attorney, whoever signs theirs, they'll send it back. They will all know prior to the increase.
And will be approved. Had a motion by Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Kirkendall, which one most clapping? Commissioner Cook made the motion, and Commissioner Young saved it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Number twenty-one, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to purchase a two thousand twenty-four downed beer six one oh five E tractor equipped with a Tiger B twenty-two, twenty-two-foot mower for the R and B two department. If approved, this purchase will be made utilizing a cooperative purchasing program with a total purchase price of one hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents, with a sixty thousand dollar down payment being funded by the R and B two department budget, and the remaining balance finance for return not to exceed five years. If approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget by transferring sixty-four, excuse me, sixty thousand from line item zero one seven six two two three three four materials and supplies to zero one seven six two two six four nine, equipment notes. Commissioner Kirkendall?
Replacing a tractor that has, right at ten thousand hours. The motor needs to be replaced, and it starts at forty-five thousand, and it just goes up, and so we're hoping to replace it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Are they taking it on trade, or are you gonna sell it, Cooper, or they?
Probably gonna sell it. I'm hoping prices are coming down, and I'm not trying to rebuild it for...
Hopefully, nobody goes back and watches this one and finds out about the motor.
Correct.
Number twenty-two, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for materials and emulsions for all road and bridge departments. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-three, consider request by Mr. Sims, purchasing agent, to present the recommendations from the Evaluation Committee concerning proposals received for the lease of property located at one twenty-five Farmer Street in Sylde for the purpose of storing vehicles and related... for the purpose of storing vehicles and related equipment and possibly award to successful vendors. If approved, authorize county judge to enter into an agreement with a selected vendor upon, upon approval as informed by the county attorney. Commissioner Kirkendall, do you wanna take this one?
I can. Um, we were approached by a, uh, by the, uh, Sillsby, what was it called?
Fleet.
Sillsby Fleet, uh, as we know, they're, uh, selling record numbers of vehicles to, uh, different municipalities. They needed a place to store them. Uh, so we were approached by them. Uh, Misty and the judge, uh, did a great job on, uh, the contract. And what I will say is through this, uh, had an interesting conversation, uh, last week, and there are other vendors who would be interested in the same if we have additional county property to lease.
And Misty, this, is this a, uh, six-month contract with an option to renew it? Is that what we talked about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You wanna go ahead and present your part? Thank you.
Proposals were received on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at two P M. In the purchasing department. Myself, Pat Boyett, and Stacy Eckert were present. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Kirkendall, Kevin Cummings, and Clay Woodward. We only received one proposal from Sillsby Board for five hundred dollars a month, which was the minimum that we asked. Um, and the evaluation committee recommends that we award them.
And you said it's five hundred a month?
Yes, sir.
Motion approved. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If we decide to, uh, that we're gonna renegotiate or not renegotiate, but approve it for an additional six months, if I could know as soon as possible.
Sure. Yeah, they, do they need to let us know thirty days before the, uh, renewal date? Is that what?
The terms say that, uh, we, we have the option to renew or reactivate this contract for additional, additional terms of six months for up to three years.
And that's for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, we've also told them too, and I'm, I'm pretty sure it's in the agreement, uh, there's a, uh, communication tower that's gonna be built on that property, so at some point in time, we're gonna have to ask them to move those vehicles to take care of that construction project. And then once the construction's over, if they still need it, we'll talk about bringing them back or not.
So, uh, we should probably set, uh, some realistic, the realistic idea that it may not be approved for another six months when we talk to them. Just give it that phone call while you're sitting.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Miss Sims. Item twenty-four, discussion of possible action to deallocate four hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars in American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one funding from the airport county match grant application and the H M G P match drainage study. Uh, projects due to a change in the final rule published by the U S Treasury that no longer allows utilizing ARPA funds toward local match on grant projects, and consider approval to amend the fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four budgets as follows. Increase revenue for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, and then there's a transfer in general fund in the line item zero two two three nine zero 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 in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars. Increase expenditures fiscal year twenty-three, zero one zero seven hundred dash zero two two, transfers to airport fund for forty-six thousand dollars. This is to cover the forty-six thousand dollars that was already spent on the airport project out of ARPA funds. This will put the money back into ARPA, and we'll use general fund balance to fund that forty-six thousand dollars. And then, continuing on, increase revenue line item fiscal year twenty-four, zero two two three nine zero 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 zero. Transfers in general fund in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And increase expenditures fiscal year twenty-four, zero one zero seven hundred dash zero two two, transfers to airport fund in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. This takes care of the project that's titled Airport County Match Grant Application under ARPA. It releases those funds that were allocated and now, uh, commits funds out of the fund balance to fund that project. The other project that we're deallocating, H M G P match drainage study, if I'm not mistaken, we submitted nine different, uh, project applications. I think we've gotten word, uh, through, uh, T D M and, uh, Mr. Mike Rowl is here from T D M. Some of those will, uh, be approved. They're going through the process. We don't anticipate all nine of them will be approved, maybe five or six of those. And then one of those projects is generators at Lumberton High School, and, uh, Lumberton I S D will fund that match, so, uh, at, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand or so that we had committed in ARPA funds for that project, we won't need that much, and we don't need to take care of it today, 'cause none of it's been approved. We'll take care of that. When we get award letters, we'll determine how we're gonna fund those. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Judge.
Commissioner Cooper?
I was thinking that initially we were told we could use ARPA funds for that. Is that correct?
We were.
Uh, and, and this route that we're taking, uh, is probably gonna be the simplest one. But to cover that forty-six thousand dollars, we did that in good faith with the knowledge that we could do it. How come we can't let that grandfather?
So there was a final rule that was adopted by the U S Treasury, and that allowed us to use the funds, uh, and I don't know when that final rule was adopted, but let's just say sometime in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. This past year, and I don't know exactly when, but right before Thanksgiving, we became notified by Trailer and Associates, our grant administrator, that another final rule had come out, and, uh, no longer would allow, uh, ARPA funds to be used to match, uh, another grant. So that's why this is coming about today. We could, uh, and we've looked at and talked about adopting a resolution that says that we had a loss in revenue, and whatever that amount we claimed up to ten million, we could use that money any way that we wanted to, uh, our county auditor. And, uh, I know before, uh, this second final rule came out, I know she also consulted with our outside auditor about doing that. And there's two reasons that they didn't feel good about recommending that. One of them is we didn't have, or we haven't shown a, a loss in revenue. And then the other has to do with the, uh, tax rate. Uh, if the, uh, the grant administrator said if we had dropped the tax rate in any of those three years, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, uh, that we also could not, uh, adopt that resolution saying that we had a loss in revenue. So for those two reasons, the auditor recommended that we not bring it.
And I, I'm good with that, and I understand all that. I'm talking about the portion that we paid out.
Yes, sir.
When we did have knowledge.
Yes, sir.
Before we found out we couldn't, how come, how come we couldn't let that stand that, that of course...
Our grant administrator is advising us on this, and she advised us at the beginning that we could use it, and now she's advising us we cannot. So that's all I know. We're not, we, and we asked the same question about, since we've already done it under that terminology, she said that we still can't do it. We can't go back. It's not grandparent.
If I remember correctly, this is a few times that they've changed the rules on us in the middle of, of all this.
If I'm not mistaken, this is probably the fourth time that we've had a final rule, and it could happen again. We're hoping that it doesn't. We're being told it shouldn't, but that doesn't mean that it won't.
Well, the problem is, is they sent the money without the guidelines, and now they're riding the guidelines as they go, and so that's the, the issue.
And Angela and I are talking pretty calmly about it right now, but when this first came up in a meeting with all of us at the table, it wasn't this calm of a discussion. 'Cause we, I mean, Amanda, uh, Holland was there and notified us we'd already spent the forty-six thousand, and, and it was, uh, pretty, uh, frustrating to be notified about that and, and, uh, and have to determine what we're gonna do to cover that money.
Yeah.
And plus, do we stop the project, or do we continue it? And we, I think we decided here that we'll continue that on. Once we vote, we'll, we'll know for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All right, that motion was by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-five, consider approval of request by Ms. Alyssa Freeman, Elections Administrator, purchased to purchase new pole pads, related and related equipment and software by transferring twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars from line item zero one zero four oh one eight hundred contingency general to the Elections Department budget as follows. Oh one oh four ninety five nine one, software license and support in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Line item zero one zero four nine zero three five two, minor equipment in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, and that will be a new line item created in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. And then also to zero one zero four nine zero three one zero, supplies in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I think we have a memo in here from Ms. Freeman that talks about the reason that this is necessary is due to a, uh, new law that came into effect that has to do with, uh, pole pads at the curbside, Senate Bill four seven seven. And, uh, I will say this is just another unfunded mandate from our state legislature. Ms. Freeman, anything you wanna add? Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, saved it by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? I was just gonna say, Alyssa, you're a brand-new Elections Administrator, and she's already asking for money. Uh, Ms. Beckton did offer to do this before Alyssa became the, uh, Elections Administrator, and we decided to wait till today to take care of this, so she kind of threw... Uh, Alyssa didn't get really thrown, get thrown under the bus. We decided to handle it this way. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Alyssa, is everything all set up good in your office now? What is the main number for the Elections Department? Did you get that on Friday from Erin?
Yes.
What's that number?
Uh, two zero nine, five four four five.
Four oh nine, two oh nine, five four four five. So that's the new phone number for the Elections Department, and we'll get that on the website and make sure everybody has that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-six, discussion on any non, any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. Is there anybody here that has anything they'd like to say? I wanna just recognize that, uh, Mike Rowl is here from T D M, and, uh, he was in contact with, uh, the county judges and the emergency management coordinators through the weather event we had yesterday, and we got a few more coming. I think round three is coming Thursday night, and round four will be here the early part of next week. I think we have an arctic blast that's coming, if that doesn't change. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And we also have the chief appraiser here, Ms. Angela Walbrook. Thank you for being here. Sheriff, for Miss Cook, or anybody else? Do y'all have anything y'all want to talk about or announce? Sheriff, come on up.
Judge, I'll say, uh, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I'd like to thank, obviously, my staff for a wonderful job they do, committed every day, but more importantly, publicly to thank you all, the court. Um, it's no secret, you're very generous, the support that you give to law enforcement in Hardin County, especially my office and my staff. There's not an employee there that doesn't know, um, we all compete for tax dollars, all of us. They come in for you. Uh, you're very generous, you're gracious. Uh, we appreciate that. It doesn't go unnoticed, and so publicly, we just want to say, uh, thank you for appreciating us. We, uh, we, we think it's a wonderful time to reflect on that, and so again, thank you.
Well, we do appreciate all that you and your men and women do to protect the citizens of Hardin County, and, uh, that never goes unnoticed from any of us that are here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything? Nope? Anybody else? Commissioner Kirkendall?
Uh, yesterday Marcus Butler from Sillsby played in the look great All-Star Game at A T and T Stadium, and he was awarded the, uh, M V P of the secondary, and he's from Sillsby I S D, so I just wanna congratulate him for, for, for that great...
Any other member of the court? All right, we'll move on to item twenty-seven. We already have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved it by Commissioner Cooper, to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Everybody be safe.